There's four.
Thank you, EB Cam. Do I open at the first step? First, I'll welcome everyone to our meeting of June 4th, 2024. We have a few things on the agenda that we're looking forward to, but to begin with, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And as always, thank you, EB Cam. These meetings are videotaped and available online for folks if they want to view it. I want to start, we're going to be kind of a little bit out of order here, but I mainly want to first start with introducing Ainsley, who's our new student rep. Welcome, Ainsley.
Hi.
Are you a senior this year, junior?
I'm a sophomore.
Sophomore. You're going to be here for years.
Yeah, so you better get used to me.
Great. Well, welcome, Ainsley. And I don't know, did Lilia, who gets Ainsley ready to do whatever she has to do for us here?
It was mostly Mr. Fox and Mr. Silva who kind of helped me get ready for this.
Oh, great. Okay. And so you know that typically we'll start the meeting and you'll give us an update of what's going on in the various schools?
Yes.
So that we have that perspective? Great. Well, welcome, Ainsley. We're happy to work with you and appreciate your volunteering your time, unless you're getting paid for this. I don't know. Very good. All right. Well, thank you. And I want to, we're taking advantage of the fact that our OPM, Owners Project Manager, we've chosen a company called Left Field, which I kind of like the name. And they're here, they just presented to the building committee, and I thought, why not take advantage of the fact that they're here? And you're just going to take a few minutes, and apparently we do have your presentation. So if you wouldn't mind, we'll take a few minutes just so that the rest of us can get familiar with sort of an overview of what lies ahead of us. So I'll turn it over. Thank you.
Jim, Kevin, you can use these seats here.
Oh, sure.
Yep.
You guys can sit and I'll stand. Thank you very much.
Glad to be on camera.
So we just thank the school building committee for selecting us. My name is Jim Rogers. I'm the principal of Left Field. We're really excited to come here and work with both the school building committee and the school committee towards the design and construction of your new central elementary school here in East Bridgewater. We thought we would do an inbred version of what we did. We're trying to get through this in five or 10 minutes. We're going to tell you a little bit about Left Field, a little bit about ourselves, and then a quick note about the process. All right, so Left Field, we've been around now for 17 years. I started the firm 17 years ago. Would you like me to talk to that? Can it pick me up?
No.
Okay, great. We're about 42 people strong right now. We're doing north of $5 billion of projects. We probably have, I don't know, 10 or 12 schools in Massachusetts. We have six or seven schools in Rhode Island, and we have four or five schools in New Hampshire. So we're firmly, we have two feet firmly planted in the educational sector. We do a lot of higher ed schools, both public and private, higher ed institutions. So education's kind of our thing. We do a lot on the educational program and multiple enrollment experience. We were told that, you know, could be a concern here. And we provide a comprehensive set of services as owners project managers. And I thought we'd introduce the group, and just as a precursor to that, Kevin and Alyssa will kind of be, especially Alyssa, will be more of our day-to-day folks. And then the bottom row is what we call our team of experts that'll plug in when necessary, and they all have their key expertise that they'll tell you about where they add value to the project. So with that, I'll pick up Kevin first.
Stand up for a second. Again, my name's Kevin Sullivan, and I'll be serving as the project director for this team. I'll be working closely with Alyssa and the rest of the team on a day-to-day basis. Just really quickly, Alyssa couldn't be here tonight. She's teaching her last course of the semester at Northeastern, and then she's off indefinitely. So I've worked with her for the past five years, first when I worked at the MSBA and most recently as a coworker. She's incredibly dedicated. And I think this committee will be happy to see how committed she is to this project. Really quickly, a little bit about myself. Prior to joining Left Field, I worked for another OPM firm for several years. And prior to that, I actually worked for the MSBA for over 13 years, managing about 150 public school construction projects. So with that, I will turn it over to...
Adele.
Adele.
I'm Adele Sands. I am the education liaison for Left Field. And prior to coming to Left Field two years ago, I was in education for 30 years, culminating as a school superintendent. I oversaw a massive six-building renovation and construction project that required 16 towns and four cities to approve. So I'm very well-versed in community relations and also in the education planning process. So I'll be working with all of the educators to get through the education planning in order to develop the design for the school.
My name's Lynn Stapleton. I'll be the project advisor. I've been a registered architect for 40-plus years. I've been working with MSBA since their inception. As soon as MSBA came on board, I transferred from architecture to owners project management. And I've pretty much seen it all with all of these school projects. So I'm here to help get through any of the issues that we may have.
My name is Terrence Conley, and my role in the project is going to be construction document review, quality control, that kind of thing, value management. My background is in construction management. I worked for a construction manager for eight years, and then I went to the architect side. I was a construction administrator for 14 years, and now I have been an owner project manager for 14 years. So I look forward to working on this project. Thank you very much.
And finally, Carlos. I know Carlos.
Yeah, hi there. My name's Carlos Montanes, and I'm the nuts and bolts guy. I look at plans and I make sure that everything that says it's going to work actually does work. My background, 20 years merchant marine, graduated Mass Maritime. I currently teach in the engineering department at Mass Maritime as a professor, a former department chair. So I understand what it's like to be in the classroom, but more importantly, I'm technically competent in many disciplines. So I want to make sure that what we put into your building actually works and that the guys can maintain and operate it and that people are comfortable and that, again, nobody's distracted. So thank you.
Thanks, Carlos. And so we had a bunch of slides about our experience and to show, you know, the committee, you know, what we're capable of doing. Instead of that, I think just for time, we thought we would take you through where we are in the process now.
Yep. So just got to spend a moment or so talking about the schedule, where we are in the process right now, forming the project team. So to move forward, you have to select an OPM. Here we are. And the next step is selecting an architect. So myself and Alyssa have drafted an RFS, which will be shared with the town tomorrow. And that's going to eventually be advertised and help us, you know, complete the next part of the process, which is to eventually hire an architect, bring him in front of MSBA for approval and execute a contract. Once we have the architect on board, we're going to actually move into feasibility study. That could, again, take anywhere from going through feasibility study and schematic design could take anywhere from, you know, roughly 12 months or so. And so, you know, once we get through several MSBA board approvals with a preferred schematic and schematic design, ultimately, we're targeting, you know, the spring of 2026 to get that big approval from the MSBA, the project's open budget, and then potentially go get funding for this project in the spring or early summer of 2026. That being said, we believe the schedule's conservative, and, you know, we've already, you know, been working and talking with the school building committee, finding ways to reduce it and hopefully make that duration even shorter.
Great. So again, targeting funding for May of 2026, the vote for this project, just to give people an idea of what we're driving towards.
And Jim, I know all of this is in the future, but roughly a reasonable groundbreak date based on a lot of things lining up. We're how many years away from perhaps a groundbreak?
You think...
Two years.
Yeah, September 28th or 29th?
Oh, no, no, 26.
No, it's May of 26th is the vote. How far after?
Fall of 26th, why not?
For the project? No, oh, the kickoff. Oh, sorry, yes.
The groundbreaking.
Groundbreaking. Sorry, I thought we were ribbon-cutting already. Yeah, fall of 26th.
Fall of 26th, the break ground.
In construction term, I know it's still too many...
Yeah, I'd say two years from now, maybe. So September 28th.
September 28th.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions from the group? Again, as Kevin said, we're going to get the RFS out for the architect. There's going to be a lot of input from the school building committee around the selection of the architect. Hopefully, this group will have some input into that selection. But that's our first task out of the gate. And by hopefully August or so, maybe September, we'll have the architect on board and we'll start working with the committee around designing the building and coming up with the best options that work best for this community.
And just those of you who aren't familiar with this kind of a project, this kind of a process, obviously, we don't have the expertise to handle or supervise a project of this size and scope. They have the expertise, and that was our first step, was to find, whoa, we need somebody to help us navigate this. And that's exactly what they will do, which is, and we were, as you just saw a little bit of, that was what impressed us on the selection committee, that we felt immediately a good rapport, a good energy level, a good focus from these folks. And we know they have the expertise, built all kinds of schools all over the place. We're, I think we're in good hands, and we're going to appreciate your expertise.
Thank you very much.
And maybe we might even ask Carlos to look at the HVAC system here in the building, Liz.
We often get asked to do that, believe it or not, so we'd be happy to.
You mentioned it was great. Right after we opened this building, the air condition was down, and somebody said, well, you know, they don't make this stuff anymore. No one knows how to run it.
Mr. Conley just caught you a holiday.
He did.
Make me a question, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, sure, please.
I guess one thing that I think it's important to understand is how long we expect that building, once it's renovated, to last? So what's the projection for that building?
You know, I'd say 50 to 75 years, but that's what we typically would say, yeah.
Per MSBA agreement, you have to, it has to last 50 years.
We're just talking the structure. And systems typically, if you have a good staff, you're going to get 12 to 15 years. If you have a mediocre staff, you might only get seven. Okay, and we're talking HVAC systems, which is your, which is the lifeblood of being comfortable within a building.
And I'm sorry, what we mentioned too in our last meeting was, you know, previously was someone like Carlos, we have asked to stick around to help turnover, right? This is going to be a highly sophisticated building with its systems. We don't always know who we're turning it over to, and it sounds like Carlos has already met this gentleman. But we will stay and help train and help that building turnover. So it's working efficiently and as it should, as Carlos mentioned.
And when the building gets turned over, and as Carlos was saying, you know, you can expect 12 years out of certain mechanicals, if I'm understanding that correctly, is there something that's provided to the town to say, hey, listen, you should factor in this in 10 years, this in 20 years? Because going through a building that we're in right now, we're in the middle of obviously a turf, you know,
Right.
redo and so forth, which is time. We did a great job with it, I think. Hopefully, mechanicals here are going well.
Right.
I think in order for us to go to the town and really build consensus for it, we want to make sure that we outlay all those things so that everybody understands, you know, over the course of that 50, 75 years,
Right.
here's what else to expect.
We do analysis?
The problem with deferred maintenance is it always gets deferred, right? And so then systems fail. What you're talking about is deferred maintenance. Everybody wants to allocate a certain percentage of a budget to address need. But then what you have is corrective maintenance and reactive maintenance that eats out the deferred maintenance, so then you never get to do what you intended to do.
Right.
So it's about...
So in selecting the equipment, we go through a rigorous process of showing the life cycle costs of each system and determining, you can determine from that, like Carlos said, some only have a 15-year life expectancy. But we're doing geothermals now that have 35-plus years, 50-years expectancy. So they'll give you a lot of information, you know, in order to make the decision on what systems you want to put in your building. So we'll go through that whole process with you.
Thank you.
I think from a budget perspective too, Johnson worked with Liz to do an awesome job of creating those long-term plans with the document he created. So I imagine, right, you're looking at him, John, sorry, John, throwing this to you, continuing this work he's created where we have, budget-wise, school committee-wise, you have this longevity, this list that you can see, we know what's coming years down the road to try to be prepared for. And I think that's been super helpful.
We're going to a school tomorrow, a private school in Connecticut, where we're going to ask you this very thing. You know, we're coming down, we weren't part of the original school, and how old is?
Yeah, it's a 12-year-old building. It's chilling and going down.
So we're going to go down there and we're going to look, Carlos is going to do an audit of the, you know, an existing conditions review of the equipment that's there. He's going to determine the useful life. Based on that useful life, we're going to come up with a budget of, you know, the larger capital renewals that they might have to do based on what we see as part of the existing condition. So we're exactly doing that very thing tomorrow for this private school.
As part of the project scope, as part of the preferred schematic report, which is one of the phases in the feasibility study, MSBA makes the town fill out a budget statement, and it gets into what the utility costs are currently, what your staffing costs. They look at, they want you to look at all of that, and they want you to project out. And you project it out based on what you selected in terms of mechanical systems. And we help you with that in terms of projecting out utility costs and whatnot, so that you have an idea based on what your school currently costs you and what it's going to cost you when you build it. They want you to make sure you know that in advance and are planning for that as you plan for the school.
Does the MSBA have sustainability guidelines that they expect the architect to follow?
Yes, and we actually get additional incentive points for the sustainability. And they've just recently changed from 2% up to available five percentage points, depending on how far you go with sustainability. So there'll be a whole session where we look at that and look at the options available for the school to maximize your reimbursement or your incentive points.
We look at programs like Mass Save or the Inflation Reduction Act as pots of money to help, you know, offset some of the equipment costs.
Yeah, we're seeing lately that you can pretty much offset the cost of geothermal with the Inflation Reduction Act, Mass Save. We're getting as much as $4 million, $5 million for both of those combined, which pays for the, you have to initially pay for the geothermal, but by the time you get the money, it's, you're recouping it, and it makes that system affordable, really.
I had one follow-up question. And then you said groundbreaking, you know, four or five months after funding the project. So that time is spent with design development and construction documentation?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would be an early package that we'd be talking about there.
Okay. And so if the architect came in and said they didn't need six months for schematic design, the schedule would reduce?
It could. The issue is schematic is before the vote, and we're talking now kind of after the vote. So if it drew back the vote and then everything moved with it, yes. I just don't know how hard and fast that may vote might be for the town.
We're going to push them, and we are subject to the timing of MSBA board meetings, but if there's an opportunity to reduce it, it's a better town vote, absolutely.
Okay. We good? And we'll give you periodic updates, those of us who are on the committee, and these folks will be coming and going probably quite frequently. So we may ask them to stop in just to give everybody...
Yeah, we'd be happy to. We do that often for school committees, so we'll make sure you guys are well-informed.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We'll follow to it. Thanks. Thanks for adding that on to your time. Appreciate it.
Our pleasure.
Great idea, Gordon. That was a great idea. Thank you.
Yeah, they were right here anyway.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Thanks so much.
We can follow to Carlos.
Thank you so much.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
The only thing more enjoyable of your expertise might be your, might be your accent. Pretty spot on.
Did Ainsley quit?
No, I told her she doesn't have anything to say. And I said, if you want to stop down and see Michael or I, and I go over some things with her, and then I'm going to introduce her to Kate and Matt.
Okay.
So, you know, so she can get Mitchell in Central School.
Super. Excellent. Okay. We'll continue and turn it to Superintendent Legault to have her corner of the meeting.
Graduation was great. It's Friday night on the turf that is no longer there, as you can see today. I can't believe how fast it's gone, and they were out there on Monday as we all were pulling in. And they have rolled it all up. As you can see, it's down in the far end of the parking lot. And they're working on the drainage system. That'll take a couple of weeks, and then they'll, the project's gone. But I cannot believe that within a day, all of that was taken up, and they're very clean, very clean. So, but graduation went off without a hitch. Lot of people in the stands. The kids were great. It's always a nice, it's a bittersweet night for everybody to say, you know, congratulations, but yet goodbye. As we always say to our seniors, we'll leave a light on. Come on back and see us. We're always here if you need our support. So, and congratulations to Mr. Silva for his first graduation. We met Ainsley Orfino this evening. She'll be here for the next couple of years, and she'll work with, she'll come down and see Michael and I, and then she'll meet Mrs. Byrne, or she knows Mrs. Byrne, Mr. Mrs. Byrne, but she'll meet Mr. Paquette and get to understand, get to understand what she's going to be doing when she comes to the meetings. I want to congratulate and wish Mrs. Maureen Holbrook, a Spanish teacher here at the East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School, wonderful retirement. We wish her the best. She couldn't be here this evening, but she wants to thank the school committee, thanks, she thanks her colleagues in the school district, and we wish her the best. DEI came up a couple of times, and Gordon and I went over this the other, the other day. We are continuing to talk about getting a subcommittee, and if a subcommittee would like to get together to discuss how we're moving forward. As I said, we still have, we still are contracted with Calice Warnham. She works with our staff and administration. We'll still continue to bring in consultants and people to work with us. We have talked about the DEI as a goal on my evaluation. It is up to the school committee as we go forward. Do we bring in an audit company, or do we not bring in an audit company? I know that Scott Walker was on the DEI committee, the, at the former school committee. I think, Gordon, that you had volunteered to be on that. I'm not sure who else was going to be on the DEI subcommittee. The scope and sequence of the scope of a audit would be what the committee would want it to be, and then bring it back to the full committee and say, and then bring in some groups to talk to and discuss and what they would do and why they would come in to audit the district. I did get a couple of questions, I did get a couple of questions from a couple of members about DEI and why we would think about going into an audit and what would be the scope of that. One of the things we hear is that are our policies in line with all inclusion and inclusionary practices? What do our hiring practices look like? Can we recruit diverse populations? And one of the big things that we do hear about is our discipline procedures and disciplined policies throughout the district. And do we discipline or behavior manage students of different races, of ethnic backgrounds differently than a white student? We have heard that over and over again. That is something that the audit would, could be some of the scope of that. It would look at our policies. It would look at our handbooks. It would look at our procedures, how we do things. Look at our own data. It's things that we're already doing, that we continue to do. We do them in the strategic plan. We do them with Calice Warnham. We did them with the deputy superintendent, Anna Brockton, when she came in and met with administrators. We're doing this work. However, an audit is a little bit more in-depth. It's not done by us. It's done by consulting. Could be done by one person, or it could be done by three or four or five people in a company. They come in. Like I said before, we've seen company, the companies that, that I received information from range from $25,000 to about $125,000. And I have spoken to all the schools that used each one of those companies, so.
Excuse me, Liz. Perhaps one logical next step, you may have already got it done, is produce an outline under the title of DEI. Like you said, training's already been done, policies are in line, whatever it is, just, just so we can say, oh, here's where we're at. And, you know, so that'll give us a good starting point to say, well, is this enough? Or do we really feel, maybe from your surveying other districts that have used a company to come in and do an audit, say, ah, I think we're in good shape, or, you know, it looks like we could learn.
I think it's, I really do think it's, it goes district by district. I truly feel it's community by community and district by district. I also do feel that, you know, we started this a long time. A former school committee member was very passionate about this. We used to have very good conversations. She was very engaged with this work. And that's, it kept it alive, and we can continue to talk about it. Dr. Williams and I do meet with the East Bridgewater Community Coalition. Prior to each meeting, we've been asked to speak. Next week, June 9th is their community celebration. So we are in constant communication. Paul O'Brien, Chief O'Brien and I spoke about this many years ago before he retired. You know, do we do an audit, you know, because he was hearing things in the community and his policing and this and that. And so it's just... The strategic plan, the, over the next two weeks, I just like to mention to everyone how busy the administrative team is and all of the principals in each of the buildings are and the teachers. At the end of the year, it's flying, it's fast and furious, there's lots of things to get done and they are moving at a rapid, rapid pace. So as today, I canceled the principal's meeting so they could stay in their buildings and they also had a literacy training today. So there's so much going on here at the end, but the strategic plan, the principals will meet, the facilitators will meet at the end of the school year. We get out on the 12th, so a couple of days after that, when they can, when they can take a breath and take a break for a second and we sit down and we'll go over the strategic plan. What did we achieve? What are we, where are we at? And where are we moving to? We'll set it up, we'll get it up online because we're working with ClearGov to get it up online, so it's up on our website. And then we will ask the school committee and any, and anybody else who would like to be part of the strategic plan in the community to come back in August to sit down and look at our strategic plan. Is it, is it still the same that we want it to be? Is this where you want us to continue to look, go forward with? And these are the three areas that are important to us as a school district and as a community. But the principals, the facilitators, the administrators, at this point, we'll finish it up, we'll get it together, we'll put it online and then in August, we'll bring everybody back in so we have time to look at it and make sure it's what we wanna do for the following year.
Excuse me, Liz, the, correct me if I'm wrong, I was just seeing if I, I think I, I think I have a copy in here, but the current strategic plan goes through 25, correct? So what you're talking about, just an update, course correction if we need it, so to speak, it's not the work to design the next strategic plan?
Oh, and you never wanna just say, okay, we, we made it through 2025 and then throw it out. As to Peter talking about, well, okay, so now we're gonna do a new track or a new turf in 15, you know, in 15 years, we're gonna throw this one away again and, and do something totally different. We wanna add on our strengths, we want to limit our weaknesses and we wanna make sure that what we're doing is going in the right direction all the time. So we're just, what we do is each year, principals, principals, the facilitators, we all sit down. We do this usually at our retreat, that was last year, every other year we do the retreat. This year, we'll bring in everybody at the end of the school year, have the principals in after the 12th and the facilitators come in, look at our plan. What did we do? Where are we at in this area? What do we need to do and to accomplish this? In August, not last year, but the year before, I invited everybody in. I think we got one person to come in and then the school committee was here and people got the, we looked at it, we said, yeah, these are the three areas that we want to still continue to work at and to move forward in. And it's just really just to say, these are the three areas, because if someone comes in and says, geez, I, I'd like you to move in this direction, well, we have the whole year to say, why? When should we move? You know, what do you, what do you think or, and we'll have, get the data over the year. So that's really all I was gonna say, the strategic plan. Plus it drives the school committee's vision and it drives our financial goals as we move forward. The contracts, we need a, as I was talking to Gordon the other day, he did, I think, Nick was in my office as we were going through a few things. If the budget subcommittee could, we could have a meeting next week at some time or the following week. It'll take about 45 minutes, it shouldn't take very long. All four contracts, we are in good standing with the administrative assistants, assistant principals, the Teamsters and ISAs. Nick Dominello has the red line versions and the red line edits. He'll be sending them out as he's getting through them. It's, it's a process. We stayed within our, we stayed within our, our budget, our budgets that were given to us. We've gotten through them. We're waiting for some of the red line edits to come back and versions. David Ashley works with most of the, the groups besides the Teamsters, that's different with the Custodians. We finished that last week. I spoke with the Teamsters today. We got one thing that they were asking for, for tomorrow and then the, and Nick Dominello will send us the red line edits. They'll go to Gordon and the budget subcommittee, just so he can see them.
And then the plan is that at our next
At the June 18th meeting.
It will, the whole committee has to sign off on those.
Yep.
So you'll have to look at them ahead of time.
They will have to look at them ahead of time, but after the budget subcommittee, just if there's any questions.
Who coordinates the budget subcommittee meeting?
Who's on, I don't
Who coordinates, like says, check schedules and things like that?
We will send it out. Well, Gordon will tell, I'll find out who's on the budget subcommittee, I'll send a email out in the morning.
Okay.
And we'll say, can you meet Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday of next week at 9:00 AM, 1:00 PM, 3:00 PM, 5:00 PM, 6:00 PM? You know, we'll just send out some times
Okay.
and find out.
Gordon, it's Peter and the three of us.
I don't know if Gordon's, I think, I don't know if Gordon's, is he still on it?
Yeah.
He agreed to stay on it?
So I think once, and Gordon has been involved as, as a school committee chair would be since he took over as, as, as school committee chair, talking with me, he was involved in the negotiations. We called him on the phone, we tell him what's happening, he was, he was involved as we went through them. And Nick Dominello also is spoken to. Mr. McKinnon.
End of year student review.
I think end of year student review was just between Gordon and I, just talking, how, how do we end up the year? I think on June 18th, we'll talk about that a little bit more. I'll have some more data for you, some more information. We have, this week, you forgot Friday, Central School has their field day, Mitchell School has the fun run going on, so there is a lot of movement at the buildings. Last week, I think we went to the biomes, we've been to the zoo, we've been pretty much every place. Buses have been in and out and it's getting hot and we're starting to see the kids outside a little bit more. At the Mitchell School, they were reading under a tree, I saw, and at Central School, they were out reading under a tree yesterday. So it's, as it gets warmer, we'll see the students outside, so. And at the, we'll also have, Dr. Williams will talk in a few minutes after reports and discussions on the strategic plan.
Thank you.
Before we get into the next thing.
Sure.
So my question was, just going back to the DEI, do we as a school committee want to set up a, a subcommittee for DEI or no? Because I don't wanna come back in the next meeting and we don't have one.
I don't think it's on the list here. We don't have one, but Scott was on it, I volunteered to go help him with it, but obviously not on it, so we probably would look for somebody to sit on that with me. I guess we could have one or maybe two people. And I, I can reach out to you and we can, anyone have any, any focus on that or concern about it, welcome to be on the subcommittee.
I brought it up, but I cannot be on it. I have too much to do.
Okay.
I just brought it up because I, I don't wanna come back and talk about it again in another future meeting, talking about, should we have a, a subcommittee for DEI?
We'll do it now.
Ash it out now.
Apparently you're not in favor of diversity and equity and inclusion.
Oh, I am. No, don't get me wrong, I am, I am in favor of it, but I
I'm only kidding.
I just can't add another subcommittee to my plate.
Any, anyone else here to be on that volunteer-wise? There's no pay, but.
I'm, I can be on that.
Oh, okay. All right, great. So, so maybe we can set up a meeting with, with Liz and, you know, get a status of where we are and
Yeah, just kinda start from the baseline. This has been a goal for a while, so I imagine there's quite a bit that should be available to us as baseline, Liz, in terms of what a scope would be.
Sure. There's something created.
I mean, it, it's really depending on us, what we want as the district and what we're looking for.
I completely get that. I think we need you
Yeah.
to help, you know what I mean, to paint that picture for us.
I certainly can do that.
So I think as long as we have that coming into a first meeting, we'll understand what that, that baseline actually, like actually is for us to then even be able to thoughtfully bring back
Sure.
what, what is a scope and it seems like there might be some overlap with maybe some budget conversation or budget subcommittee conversation about what is doable within the scope. Does that make sense?
Yep. Okay.
Should we vote for that since we just created a new subcommittee?
Yes, we can do that. We'll add that to our list and Mike will just add it to the current list on a go-forward basis. We'll know that there'll be a DEI subcommittee. Okay. Need a motion?
I won't to add the DEI as a subcommittee.
Okay, second.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Dr. Williams?
Great. I'll have Mrs. Fisher and Mrs. McPartland join me. I believe I got to everyone's packets before you picked them up, so I'm hoping you have the colored. Gordon, you might have picked yours up beforehand.
I think I saw it, I think, I saw it somewhere.
I put it in your mailbox, but you had already picked up your packet.
Oh, right.
So I wasn't sure if I was getting to your mailbox again.
Thank you.
So as the superintendent mentioned, an extremely busy time of year for our buildings with end-of-year activities and lots of night commitments. We did extend the offer to the administrative team if they'd like to join us, but they knew with Mrs. Fisher and Mrs. McPartland here, we were in great hands, so. We just really wanted to share with you the work that we've been doing over the course of the year. As I've said before, our instruction is only as strong as the capabilities of the, the teachers in front of the students. So we have spent a lot of our time and effort and energies making sure that our teachers have what they need from training to resources so that they can best support and educate our students in the classroom. So a lot of what you'll hear tonight, you heard pieces along the course of the school year, certainly for our new members, there might be some more questions if there's things that are new to you. But we figured we would just go through some of the renovations that we've done with our protocols in the district that are better set up to support our staff, which in turn make our students more successful. So I'm going to start with Mrs. McPartland and she'll talk to you about the first document, which is our D cap, which is the acronym for our District Curriculum Accommodation Plan.
Hi, everyone. So Mass General Law requires us to have a district curriculum accommodation plan, which really is intended to lay out the guidelines for principals and teachers to make sure that all students are setting up their classroom, the classrooms are set up for all students to be successful in general education settings. And so we do have that 24-page document, so it's super user-friendly. But what we've done over the last couple of years is we've had a number of committees look at that document, revamp it, and we came up with what was in your packet, which is this D cap at a glance. So this here is a definitely, like I said, user-friendly list of interventions that can be used with all students within a classroom. It's kind of like a bag of tricks. So, 'cause I think oftentimes teachers hear the words accommodations and they think, oh, I can only use that with special education students, someone has to give me permission to use this. Where instead this is saying, no, any student can have any of these accommodations at any time in your classroom. So it's almost like a checklist. If you're having, if you think a student needs something, you can look at this document, which covers all parts of our strategic plan. So it covers assessment, instruction, and social emotional well-being. It ties in directly also with our inclusive practices training, our UDL training that we've been going through for the last couple of years. We have only one more cohort of teachers to go through and then at that point, by probably winter next year, 100% of our staff will have been trained in inclusive practices and these are perfectly in line with inclusive practices. So we're trying to make sure that all of our students are in classrooms that have challenging, meaningful learning environments and that all of the areas of the strategic plan are being met also while we're doing these. This also perfectly ties into our child study process, which is our CST process. It's on the flip side of the, the D cap that's in your packet and Mrs. Fisher is gonna talk about that.
Hi. Thank you for having us tonight. As Mrs. McPartland stated, we've done a lot of work throughout the year on our D cap and our CST process and we've made this beautiful flow chart as a team that kind of walks teachers and parents through our process. So if we have our teachers in the classroom with students using their normal bag of tricks and maybe something's just not working, they have this wonderful document they can go to, which is a shortcut to 24-page document, but this is a nice hang on the wall and they can look to it, say, are students having a struggle? We can go through and implement some extra additional strategies that maybe they hadn't tried. And if those strategies are successful with our students, when they're accessing grade level curriculum, the teachers will note that in place. So that way, as our students progress through their years, it's noted that this child has gone through some interventions to have success with grade level curriculum. If our students, the teachers, try some strategies and our students are still find, not finding success, then they will go to phase two of our child study process. They will start the child study process and have an initial meeting with the team where they will discuss with our interventionists, our administration, and parents, some additional strategies to implement and collect data to see if those strategies are successful with our students accessing grade level material. Upon those strategies working, if they find success, again, they will be documented so that way our students, as they progress through their years in our system, those teachers that get our students down the line will know that that strategy was something that worked. And these can be accommodations such as allowing the student to provide oral explanations of learning rather than written and finding the best strategies that work for our learners. If we find that that, again, after this meeting and more in-depth interventions are not successful, they will reconvene as a team, have further discussion, may implement some further interventions in our tier two of our child study and then collect data. And upon that, if that is still not successful, they'll reconvene as a team and start talking about the referral process for special education. Our goal with our child study process is to have success with all of our learners accessing grade level material and providing all of our students the strategies and tools they need to be successful.
And ongoing conversations we've had with Mr. Phelan and the Special Education Department is, you know, when students are hitting that wall, too often, we're going right to a pre-referral process where students going through excessive testing to determine eligibility for special education, oftentimes to find out that they're, they don't have a disability, it's just there's a barrier there to their accessing the learning. So certainly with this process, it will cut out a, a lot of wasted time, having students go through that assessment and resources of staff conducting that testing. So we're hoping to really reduce and minimize the amount of time and delays that go on going through that process and getting the students the supports that they need. And you can see in yellow, the underlined, that in the live document is actually the form, so that, as Mrs. Fisher said, the teacher the following year isn't starting all over again and figuring out what works best for a student. They have that, the I is Individual Curriculum Accommodation Plan for a student. The next page just talks a little bit about the grants and certainly over the course of the year, we've shared information about that, but I think it's important to note over $200,000 that we've acquired in grants that has really helped with the work that we've been doing this year. The literacy grant, as the superintendent spoke about, we presented to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed today about our literacy action plan. That's for K to six. We're meeting with the principals on Thursday to share it with them and then we'll be sharing it with you in the fall. It really articulates for, for teachers of literacy, how often they should be spending on certain components of our literacy program, what does instruction look like for all students, what does instruction look like for some students that might need additional supports, and identifying those guideposts as we talk about our assessments and determining which students need supports based on how they're performing. So it's a real comprehensive plan. I give all the credit to the rest of the team and we'll certainly make sure to mention them when we share the plan with you in the fall. The high-quality instruction materials grant, this is a continuation. I give that credit to Mrs. McPartland for getting that grant and doing all the legwork and suffering through weekly meetings with the state on those grants, but certainly very lucrative for us. This was a, a lot of the work that went into our math programming and making sure teachers had the professional development, the resources. We're very excited about Dr. Mellow doing a training for staff. She's actually and suffering through weekly meetings with the state on those grants, but certainly very lucrative for us. This was a lot of the work that went into our math programming and making sure teachers had the professional development, the resources. We're very excited about Dr. Mello doing a training for staff. She's actually doing it after the school year ends on June 25th, and we had, what, over 30 staff members?
Thirty staff members.
That were interested in coming full-day, schools out, and they're interested in being here for the full day of training. So we're excited about that. I think I've mentioned to you about the MYCAP, the Career and Academic Planning Grant. We had a team of staff, mostly guidance counselors. We had a couple of classroom teachers, that's grades six through 12. It really speaks to more of the vision of the graduate and making sure that our students are prepared post-high school, ready for college, ready for career, and starting that planning process sooner, so that as students get into the junior, senior high school, they're looking at electives, they're planning courses based on maybe what they want to do in the future. Certainly plays into the early college programming that we're starting. It's a platform that students actually, our sixth graders this year, we piloted with them, so they had a chance to create an account, do an interest inventory, and we'll continue that work so that as students go through the years, they'll actually build that platform, create resumes, develop skill sets, and be using that for planning as to what they want to do post-high school. And then lastly, the supporting students, the main part that came out of this grant was having supports for those students most in need, those students that needed resources, counseling beyond the capabilities of our staff here. And I don't mean capabilities as far as their expertise, I mean the commitment of time. So we're finding that there's definitely an uptick in need for students to receive supports beyond the school day, counseling, resources, families that were struggling to get connected with resources. So CareSalus is that platform. You may have seen the email that went out to families. It can be done anonymously, it can be done by referral through the home, or you can contact the school and they can help with that referral in making sure we connect students with the resources that they need. Just in the three weeks, I think there's been over 200 correspondents that have gone through CareSalus. It's either families that are accessing or staff members that are accessing the resources, or they've made a connection with an agency and they've had email communications, phone conversations, and we have six students that have actually been connected with services just in the three weeks. So we're already seeing success, and we look forward to more success with that as we continue to use it. That's a five-year license that we have.
So I think, I saw the email, I thought it was the parent square. I would say anytime we have those programs, let's make sure that, because I think it's a fantastic program, great offering, let's make sure we continuously kind of put that out there and market that to the population, because I think a lot of sometimes, I think sometimes what happens is is we come up with these great programs, we kick them off, we get great success, and then maybe it gets lost in the next thing. Whereas that, I think, is such a phenomenal opportunity and something that is desperately needed, let's just make sure we're constantly marketing that.
Absolutely. And one thing that CareSalus does for us is they have a bank of resources, which for every month, there's a flyer that's already been created that we can send out, reminding parents of the resources, reminding of opportunities that are there. So that's a really good point, to make sure it doesn't fall off until something, and then it's like, oh, yes, we have CareSalus. Note taken. Lastly, on the back is really just where things are going from the work that's been done this year and looking towards next year. Is that me too?
That's right, I can jump in if you want. So just, it touches on some of the work we've already done. The first thing would be, we're going to be looking at developing what we call is guideposts for classroom instruction and intervention. So that's really giving a conversation starter for when we're concerned about a student's progress. It's what are those cut points on our, like, I-ready scores or our DIBBL scores, our district assessments? Because I think sometimes in a classroom, you have students who you feel are struggling, but you don't know what's happening next door. And so it's, everything's relative to what's in front of you. So this gives us a conversation starter of, you know, if a student is achieving this particular level, this is the kind of interventions we're going to start with. So we'll be working on that with our current interventions of I-ready and DIBBLs. We're also going to be looking to evaluate how we provide interventions across the different buildings and make sure they're consistent and make sure we're meeting all of our learners from our most struggling to our highest-achieving learners, because they also need intervention just in a different way. So we'll be looking at that. That includes also just empowering and coaching our teachers through inclusive practice. We've been doing that for years with the UDL training, but we have to continue with that. And I think it's going to also be an excellent tool for our administrators to be able to now have a common language, and that when they're going in and they're conducting walkthroughs and classroom observations, all of the teachers now have a similar bag of tricks that they can be looking for and giving feedback on. Something else, I don't know if Mrs. Fisher wants to jump in about the dashboard that we're looking at for next year?
Currently, we are looking at developing a data dashboard for all of our learners. With the long-term plan of all of us having access to it, we'll pull up a student/learner profile, and it will show the whole child. So it will show attendance data, lifetime academic data, diagnostic data, teacher narrative data. If we've had students with certain D cap strategies that have worked, that will follow the student. It will also have any identifying data that will be a part of it. And it's all being built in-house. We are using an analytics platform to take a look at it with us, a specialist, and we're very excited about it. It's built all through Google Tools within our own domain, so it's very exciting, and I think it's going to really help our teachers to have access to it as well as hopefully eventually parents too.
You've heard us mention Panorama a lot. We've had Panorama since pre-COVID. We're still trying to get Panorama off the ground, so that's why we've decided to kind of pivot and go with a Google platform, because teachers use Google on a regular basis, it's more accessible for them. We're finding that with Panorama, it's being used in small pockets, it's not being used broadly enough amongst teachers. So it's also much more cost-effective for us to go this route as well. So you won't be hearing Panorama in the future once this platform is built. It would be this platform that teachers would be using through the child study process on a regular basis as they look at their student, especially at this building when they only have the student for one course, they'll be able to see how that student's doing across the whole day.
Is this, can I ask you a question? Is this something that we have to have a license for with Google, or no, we're just?
No, this is, it is signed off on the student data privacy policy too with the Massachusetts SDPA, so all of the data is in-house and protected. So it's already, and Google for Education also has assigned student data privacy policy.
That was my next question.
So, yes.
If the data was secure.
It is. Yep, both parties have a signed agreement with student data privacy with the state of Massachusetts.
Is there a timeline for the dashboard? Because it sounds awesome.
We will be doing a lot of work on it this summer, Mrs. McPartland and I. We're very excited.
I am very excited about it.
It's information we all, we have already, it's just being able to connect.
Access it easily for everybody. Because that was one of the questions I had, again, as somebody knew when you were going through the, you know, child study process, right? So like, when you get to the high school, if one teacher initiates this process, how do you collectively let the rest of the teachers know currently without that dashboard?
So that's been one of the biggest challenges with Panorama, not being able to attach documents or have anecdotal records?
Yeah.
Be added to it. So that would be extremely important, that when teachers are able to access this, they'll be able to see that trail of information.
That's great.
So we want a place where this checklist, if something's been checked off?
Yeah.
That it follows that student from year to year, and that teachers can even make comments, like, you know, for instance, the teacher that's giving the student the little game reward on the Chromebook every time they've worked for 45 minutes. That needs to be noted, because if that's an intervention that's worked for that student, it's had success, that should be noted.
I like that. I feel like as a parent, like I try to make sure in advocating for my kiddos that when they're paired with their next teacher, obviously in the younger years where you have a little more understanding of who may be the teacher, that that's like the thing in my mind, right? Like, well, what interventions have worked for my kiddo in the classroom this year? And not that I'm at all ever trying to select the next person, right? But in just trying to be mindful in communications with the teacher about, well, is that being thought of? You know, he responded best to this versus this. And is that something that's being brought in? I love that that would just be available.
That's our goal.
That's the intention.
That's our goal.
Can the dashboards speak with school brains, or are they?
Yes. So we're going to do all of these SFTP uploads, which I learned all about last summer.
That sounds very exciting.
It's very, and it's going to sync nightly, and it's all going to be live time. It's, I geek out.
Often when we meet, there's this other language that's being spoken that I'm just sitting there like, okay, as long as you're saying, you can do it.
Yes, it's going to speak to school brains. It's really cool how the data comes in.
Which is great. So everything that's in school brains, you know, any sort of behavioral data or any sort of attendance or lifetime grades, those will sync every night. But then we also have the ability to connect it to our I-ready platform and have those scores there. And our MCAS scores, I can upload those to the platform, so we can have everything in one spot. So it gives you a much clearer picture of what's the whole child.
Very cool.
I've been a big fan of trying to get additional data in order for us to make some decisions. So this sounds fantastic. Thank you very much for continuing to push this forward. I very much look forward to seeing what it becomes, because I think it's everything that I think we need in order for us to be able to make some informed decisions as to, you know, which directions we want to go. So thank you very much.
And just the very last thing that's on your sheet here is about writing across the curriculum. So writing comes up year after year after year. It's always something that's a struggle with curriculum, because there's no really good writing programs out there of how to teach students how to write. So one of the things we have to just make sure first of all is, while we're researching those types of programs, also just making sure that writing is happening, and that it's happening in all content areas. That's not just the job of an English teacher to provide writing opportunities. So one of the initiatives for next year and our real goal in all three schools is to be making sure that our students are writing in all their content areas and in their special areas. And it will look different in all of those, but it will allow students to have this broader range of writing opportunities, just because you only become a better writer if you have opportunities to write. So that is something you'll hear more about from us next year as well.
I think one of the, correct me if I'm wrong, one of the bullet points on the vision of the graduate is communication, right? So obviously, writing, being able to speak properly, et cetera, et cetera, is huge. So thank you.
Can I just ask about the MYCAP? Because I don't know anything about it. So what's the, is the platform called MYCAP?
No, it's a state-run platform.
And is it only, like, it says six through 12, but is this, is this new? Because you said you were working with the sixth graders on it? What does?
Right, so the team that worked on it this year on the grant, we had some trainings with the state over the course of the year. So then Mr. Dickey and Mr. Fassett at the Mitchell School are the two members on the team. So they pulled the sixth graders in small groups and helped them establish accounts. So students will actually come up here, seventh graders, with accounts in the platform. So then when they're up here, they'll start doing interest inventories. I just attended the other day Career Fair that the fifth grade put on, which was phenomenal. I've already had conversations with Ms. Wolf about how we can bring that up to this level, especially as the students get older and start thinking about their own career path. So there's lessons and activities. We developed a scope and sequence, so I'll be sharing that with you in the fall, so that you'll see opportunities that will be given to sixth grade, seventh grade, all the way through, especially, you know, 11th and 12th grade when they start going to actual career fairs, construction fairs, things like that.
All in the same platform.
All within the scope and sequence of the MYCAP.
Awesome. Thank you.
One of the things, excuse me, I'm sorry to bring it up in our public meeting, but just something to think about is, one of the things that occurs to me, I would love to have an overview of curriculum, sort of building by building, not all the detail, but just sort of, okay, this is what they're going to learn in this building, that you guess I'm ready to go to this building, et cetera, et cetera. And then the cross-references to Universal Design for Learning, Vision of the Graduate, this, so you can kind of see the flow, like, oh, this is all, I get it now, you know? Whereas I can see some of this stuff, but this is, I'm just speaking for myself, and I, again, I apologize, this will be something we'll kind of work out, you know, before we get to the meetings, just to see what's feasible and what's not. But I just think for my own sake, I haven't polled all the other members of the committee, but I think it would just be helpful to kind of get that overview of, oh, these are, this is how all these things connect. I, again, I'll flush it out with the rest of the committee, but we'll have more specifics or maybe work with you folks and come up with an outline that's reasonable.
Right, and I think we feel the same way, even just with a lot of the work we've been doing in isolation with our D cap and with our child study process, and now with our literacy action plan. It's like, at some point, we need to see how these things all are interconnected? And not just, you know, isolated things. So I really agree with what you're saying. Certainly, there's hundreds of standards within each of the content areas, so maybe focusing on power standards within each of the grade levels. And actually, Central School has done that in years past with, you know, this is what you can expect in first grade, what they'll learn by the end of the year. So I think that's what you're saying, something to that extent.
And just on a broader topic, our first meeting of the next school year is in August, we'll have to set those dates, but to me, I would like to see that meeting be pretty much open-ended for the sake of all of us to put our suggestions on the table. That would be one that I would have, to say, gee, I really would like to see this, you know, throughout the course of the year. What do you folks have? I spoke with Superintendent LaGo about the meeting structure and whether or not, and you'll see it'll come up in the agenda as well too, I think it's next up, is that are we better served with one meeting per month? Couple things to that. There might be some months we have to have two, but what one meeting per month might do is open up some time for the subcommittees, so it's just not more upon more upon more. So the subcommittees have that kind of leeway of time, like, oh, my goodness, this will be, this will be great, we have time for that. And I have, you know, more thoughts around the subcommittees. I'd like each subcommittee to come up with a description, responsibilities, and a overall meeting schedule. Once a month, you know, these months, you know, budget subcommittee probably has, gets heavy into those months, right after the first of the year or whatever, things like that, that will not only help us, but it'll help future, the next committees, you know? So at least they'll have something to draw from, rather than just seeing a title, you know, I don't, I don't know what that is, you know?
I also think if there's multiple people in the subcommittee, it'd be good to have a lead.
Yeah, that was another thing too, and I don't want to get us too drawn down, but that's exactly, you know, just somebody just to say, okay, I'll, to your point, Dan, somebody would just say, okay, I'll be the one to connect with the other two people on the committee to see what we come up with a date, and somebody to take notes. Thank you. But thank, I didn't mean to divert, but you got me going with, while I was looking at this information about, this is really exciting.
I think ultimately, it's the vision of the graduate.
Yes.
And, you know, as, and we're working really from the top down, so that we start with the high school. This is what we want them to be able to know by the time they leave. And then what do they need at Mitchell School in order to prepare them for junior senior? And then back to Central.
Yep.
I think, no, I think to piggyback on what you said, because. It can be interesting to see how it changes too, because I feel, oh, I'm sorry. Because I feel like, in my experience, the way they feel in sixth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, all changes.
And they'll have a documentation of that, you know, from sixth grade on. Yes, my son wanted to drive an ice cream truck in third grade, that was his lifelong dream, so that did change.
I think piggybacking on what you said, that when it then is clear, and then when it comes to our meetings, it then is clear as how it fits in our purview.
Yes.
Right? Like, I think when it's at this meeting, is it something in our purview that we're making a decision about, or is it an opportunity for a presentation? Right?
Right.
And which is lovely and awesome to hear about, but I think sometimes to make it clear for the community about what actually we have say of, we're not telling, we're not designing this, right? We're not choosing this or have our hands in this, but it's lovely for us to hear about that.
I think all subcommittees need to fold up under whatever purview it's supposed to be.
Right.
And I know that there'll be some kind of, so if a DEI audit is requested, obviously that budget needs to be, you know, made aware of that. But to me, that was, has always been a challenge with some of these subcommittees, is how they actually fold up under what is under our purview.
We'll get working on that. I think that those are legitimate points. And I'd be excited to have us get our arms around. Little bit of work, but maybe with the readjustment of our schedule, it won't feel so overwhelming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just one minor housekeeping thing for the strategic plan into 2025. I think there's some names that probably aren't involved anymore.
Right.
That'll be changed.
Speaking of school committee meeting calendars. Speaking of school committee meeting calendars, the, I think attached, you put in our package, Mike, what our current schedule is, right? So you can see, like, last year, our first meeting was August 22. And typically, we'd be right around those, that date for the start of the next one, next school year. But between the meeting on June 18 and by that August meeting, I'd like to do the work so that we'll say, oh, we are only gonna have one meeting in September, one in October, one in November, one December, but then maybe two in January, one in February, two in March, whatever. We'll work it out so it makes sense that our work can get done. I don't want to cut us short, but I do think there's some benefits to just having a meeting. And my conversation with Superintendent LaGo was that it would be a different structure a bit. So for instance, tonight, I think was a good example where there was a lot of give and take. One of the observations I've had, and I think I spoke with Becky, that a lot of times over the years, we feel like, okay, I'm just a witness, I'm just an observer here, when it's really more than that. And anything we can do so that it's an interaction with Liz and her staff and us, and there's a collaboration on the agenda, hey, this is what we'd like to see. There'll be times when Liz will say, no, we really need to push this onto the agenda because this is really important, we need to get this done. And so it'll be a give and take, but it'll be more of a dynamic interaction, and there'll be a structure to it. Like, so if we had, for instance, if we have one meeting per month, it'd be time allotted for strategic plan, time allotted for budget finances, and after each one, discussion time allotted, and then, I don't know, we can get so far into it, but, you know, new business or something that we want to plan for our subsequent meetings, make sure it's on there. And I think Peter had a good suggestion about, it'd be nice to have a tickler system set up so that in a course of a conversation, we might say, oh, can we follow up on that in the December meeting to see where we are on it? Rather than, hey, we dealt with it here, but we never really kind of closed the loop, we didn't see where, how it finished, whatever the project was. And that way, again, we can stay in that loop. And sorry for all the randomness of this, but for instance, on the curriculum, if you look on our purview, it's budget, policy, and superintendent. Well, to me, it's sort of under the superintendent's umbrella that, obviously, teaching our kids and making sure our teachers are prepared for it and have the capability to produce that kind of education, that to me is under that bigger picture. Any of that.
Can I chime in?
Yeah, go ahead.
Are we on that discussion?
Yeah, the school committee meeting calendar, yeah.
Yeah. So I'm gonna play devil's advocate, I'm gonna just throw out there, just having the institutional knowledge of, we did try to have one meeting a month for at least a year or two, and maybe it was only a year, I don't know. But I remember doing it, and the meetings were very long. And it also makes it difficult when we have policies to approve because we have the two reading process. If we only had one meeting a month, then it's gonna postpone those approvals of the policies to the following month.
Mm-hmm.
Could the policies be an added meeting?
They could be, but it's difficult. Once the meeting calendar comes out, it's because there's so many of us, it's difficult to get a meeting that everybody can show up to. So it's much better if we have a pre-planned meeting calendar for the whole year because then everybody knows they put on their calendar and they know to keep that date open. But it's really hard when there's all of us, superintendent and everybody, just to show up.
Well, excuse me, to your point, Ellen, about, yeah, there's a lot, and the meeting gets really cumbersome. I think our conversation was around, we'll put structure to it so it's not so, you know, cumbersome. And there's gonna be some work, I agree. It's not just gonna flip a switch. So it's gonna, that's why I wanted to have a meeting where we all can kind of discuss it openly and kind of, hey, what about this? You know, what will work about this? What are the obstacles it creates? So that we can actually have a plan and then implement it. And you're right, there might be, I'm not saying one meeting a month for the whole year, there'll probably be months where we'll have to have two. But where we can, I know that beginning of the year is crazy and the holidays and everything else, you know, just plan it out that way, but have a more of a structure to it.
I think one of the issues that we brought up, Gordon, when you and I spoke, was that the subcommittees were having difficulty finding time.
Right.
And it was, if the subcommittees could find time, like, on the opposite weeks of, if you put it on a Wednesday in the middle of the month, the sub, two subcommittees.
Is that only the budget subcommittee?
Two subcommittees could meet the first week, and two subcommittees could meet the second week, and you're not being torn. And what's happening is, or I felt what was happening is, we would call a meeting and somebody would, I can't make it tonight, I can't do that night, I can't do this night, I can't do that night. And then it was like, okay, so we, it's no fault of anybody, people are busy. And that's why you have us, me and my team, and then we do something, and then all of a sudden, well, it wasn't approved by the subcommittee. And Gordon and I were talking about that, and I said, Gordon, we couldn't get a subcommittee meeting, or we couldn't get everybody together, or Rebecca came one day and then someone else came the next day, and we were like, could you just take a look at this? Can you see this? And then it was like, all right, we're all gonna be able to get to this one. And sometimes people can meet at 11, some people can meet at 6, some people can meet at 2. And that's really what it came down to, is giving the subcommittees time to get involved in the meetings. You're going to need, when the budget begins, or when the budget starts to get in its crucial crunch time, the subcommittee needs time to meet. And instead of maybe having those two meetings that month, you're giving the time to the subcommittees to meet so that they can get to the capital finance committee, they can go to a FinCon meeting, they can go to a selectmen's meeting, or, and not, and not doing this. I saw that this year more than I've seen it in the last couple of years. And I think people were, the school committee is focused to get the work done, but yet we're finding, it's getting hard to find the time to get it done. And it's, the budget is, the human resources, the budget, and then the steering committee of making sure that the professional development, the curriculum and the instruction piece is going on, that's churning over here. Why we're churning over here, getting the people to get in, oops, sorry, get into the mix, to get into the mix of PD and then get into the mix of instruction. And we're hiring people to get in to there. And then over here, you've got this mix going on, where's the budget coming from and where's it going here? And can we get the person in here? So we've got three different mixers going on. We've got 16 different subcommittees going on.
Seventeen.
And we're trying to get.
We just added an eighteenth.
Right. And you're trying to have two meetings per month. And it's difficult. And I was just, and Gordon and I had a really nice conversation of saying, you know, if it's, if it's, we start off, it's 10 minutes of curriculum instruction, we stop, we send some questions and answers, questions to you, or you send us questions, we send you, and you have your conversation. And I think that's what, you know, I think we've been working towards that for a long time. This is a, it's a meeting in public. It is not a public meeting. It is for the school committee to discuss policy, finance, and to be able to hear what we do, if it's a 10-minute curriculum instruction discussion, passover questions, maybe some questions, move to special education, that's 4.2 million, almost $4.3 million of our budget. We don't hear enough about special education and inclusion in our district. And all we heard about was transportation of and out-of-district students. And we didn't hear enough from that office this year. And then budget and finance, and he should be, and John, not he, I apologize for that, John Shea should go last and wrap it up and say, we, we're okay. Here's the budget, maybe not go through some of the other things, but go through one particular piece of it in September, one particular piece in October. Maybe the mid-year, it's, we're good on salary, we're good on this, but I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna spend $115,000 in January on IT. That's what you and I spoke about, and just, and giving the subcommittees more time. That's really what we came down to, so.
The bigger picture along those lines is, as I referenced before, if you're on a particular subcommittee, perhaps one of the first meetings or the first conversations you have is, okay, what's our responsibility? And, you know, you don't have to make it up, we'll help you with it if you need, need be. And what kind of schedule do we anticipate? So for instance, excuse me, there's some subcommittees that probably don't even have to meet this whole year, depending on what the status is. Great, okay, so we don't have to worry about that. We can still do the description and the responsibility, but right now, there's no meeting scheduled for this current year. If something comes up, you have to lay it in. But some of the other things, budget subcommittee is probably a big one, where we can kind of target, okay, let's put placeholders out there for these subcommittees, and the other ones, same kind of deal. Well, you know what? This committee, we probably don't have to do anything until February. Great, okay, so then when you do that kind of work, you lay it all out and go, oh, okay, this isn't, this isn't so bad. We can make this work.
So Gordon, will you take the, do you take the lead on reorganizing the dates and, like, anticipating since you have been here? Who's been here longer?
Ellen.
So you know.
Ellen's older than I am.
You know which key dates, which key dates we have to hit at what meetings so that we can plan the agendas out in advance?
Yeah.
Right.
Like, we know there's certain, we know in March, we need to be together more, that's a huge budget time. But we know the spring is heavier on that piece of it, when we've seen that piece. I think, for me, with the, thinking about this prior to even chatting with Gordon, and certainly, I'm not really having much about my own thoughts and several notes on my phone, I've thought a lot this past year about the structure of the meeting and the fact that it is a meeting in public, and are we utilizing this meeting like a business meeting? You know, are, why don't we utilize our subcommittees differently? Why don't we have on our agendas an update from a subcommittee, a report from a subcommittee? Why isn't a policy, well, we know why, right? There was, we were waiting. I'm using as an example, right? Like, where we're having those types of things, or is the evaluation committee meeting more frequently, just kind of keeping up to date with stuff? We have these subcommittees that we don't utilize as much, and I think it would make sense for them to report the business in our meeting. One of the things that put it in my head the most was the impression of the community of things that we are responsible for or that we can manage or that we oversee that we do not.
Agreed.
So there is an impression out there that sometimes there are things we are doing that we, they are not our job to do. And I think sometimes the meetings are confusing because it seems like it is because we're hearing about it or we're discussing it. So that's what started it in my mind, well, this miscommunication about what we're fully responsible for. And so, was there another note about that? And then I think, to the point Liz was making about the budget subcommittee before, I think the committee this past year, this worked really hard to show the community, and particularly people at Town Hall and other departments, that the school committee was really showing up in a different way this year than we were trying to shift and show what we were present for. And I don't want that momentum to be lost either, which does mean certain subcommittees are heavy, right? To your point, right? That if we worked hard to make sure there was representation at every sort of meeting, we needed time. So in that, I had started doing some research, what towns meet once a month? What does it look like for them? What do their agendas look like? I started just on my own doing that. I think once a month seems like that could be challenging in some ways, but to shift the meeting to fit what you're talking about, I don't see how six people who have full-time work, homes, careers, all of us are people of service, that's why we're here, we're coaching sports teams, we're volunteering at something else. So when, how do we, how do we make sure that we're giving this 100% while also doing all these other things that we're doing? Because we are people of service, right? That's not gonna change about us. So how do we have time to do that? And meeting twice a month, I think is lovely for things being able to be more efficient, but I think it doesn't give enough time for smaller working group conversations.
Yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I agree with everything that's been stated, and I would just say back to kind of like the number side of things. So we had scheduled, I believe, 18 meetings for this school year. So, and we don't meet in July, correct?
Yep.
So there's 18 meetings, there's 11 months that we meet in. I think a good way to look at this would be, how many monthly meetings does as a full body do we want to get together? And then with the freed-up time of reduced full meetings, how much can that get put towards the subcommittees? And then deciding which subcommittees require a lot of work, and then having that all aligned with what's under our purview.
Right.
So to me, I think that's how we should go about looking at this.
Yeah. To me, the overall point is being effective and efficient, to Becky's point. We're all got other things going on. I want to be respectful of that, but I also want to be respectful, as we all are, to our responsibilities, to do what we need to do on the committee as a whole. And so I think just taking a hard look at, everything starts with the schedule, right? Put these hard dates in, giving the flexibility to have availability for the subcommittees to meet and be effective. And also, the other piece I was gonna bring up at the next meeting is that I'm gonna research with MAS C about what workshops are out there that we think would be beneficial for us. And, which is great in general, but, oh, it's another date, you know? Who can, I know we've tried to have it in the past and people's availability was so limited, but if we can plan ahead and say, oh, you know what? We only have one meeting in January, but we have a workshop at the end of the month, and, you know, we know that a couple of months ahead of time. But in enough time so that it's relevant and makes sense for whatever the workshop's focus is. So that's just another thing. I think that, it's just gonna take a coordination, but at the end of the day, I think it can be more effective use of our time, the administrator's time, and, you know, I agree with all the points that Liz made, that, you know, there's curriculum, there's finance, there's Jay's Department of, you know, Student Services or.
Student.
Yeah. And so to look at that whole picture and say, oh, this makes sense. Even on one meeting a month, if we organize it properly, we can get it done. But it means we might have a little bit more work to do ahead of the meeting so that we can stay on schedule. And maybe even, I'm usually not a huge fan of this, but maybe we even allot time slots, like you, like you said, 10 minutes for this, 10 minutes for a discussion.
I'm a fan of that because I think it helps keep people on track.
Yeah. Yeah. There are times, we might have to be a little bit flexible because something may show up that was unexpected out of the discussion, but, you know, it might make sense so that maybe the one meeting a month is, I can't envision being any more than two hours. An hour and a half would be great if we think it can all fit in there.
To Becky's point, I did speak to a superintendent at a meeting a couple weeks ago, and they, they follow a subcommittee pattern.
It just seems to make sense.
They just follow, it's all subcommittee.
Yep.
Because this meeting is you. It's not, it's not us two. I mean, we want to tell you what we're doing, and we certainly wanna, we want to showcase all the good work that is happening, but as I spoke to the superintendent, that's one of the reasons I brought it up to you, Gordon, is that, is they, it's about the subcommittees. Subcommittees come in and say, we spoke to the superintendent, we spoke to the assistant superintendent on this, we spoke to the finance director, we spoke to this. This is what we know, this is what we're looking for, and this is how we're gonna go forward with this. And they only do the subcommittee. And so they might have three subcommittees that night, so budget, policy, and budget, policy, and, you know, curriculum. And all three committees have a 15-minute time limit, and then there's a discussion, 15 discussion, 15 discussion. And he told me it eliminated a lot of the, he said, he said, I got, he got much more participation, he said, it seemed, at the subcommittee meetings, like, people were more enthused to go to subcommittee meetings, and that the meetings ran very, very smoothly and very timely.
One of the things that put it on my radar to begin with was thinking about turnover. And I don't think that, myself included, anyone realizes truly until you're doing it, the time commitment of being on the school committee. And in order to try to keep people in wanting to do this over and over for the continuity, that that was in my mind. So one of the things that put it on my mind is I had several friends and other. So one of the things that put it on my mind is I had several friends in other districts that are running three, four terms, and I'm thinking to myself, how, like, how do you, for nine, twelve years, have the time? You know, to do that is what started putting it on my mind. And what those people were in communities that met once a month.
And that's why.
So.
Crazy B.
You're the crazy one for twice a month? But that was a significant difference when I think about, well, what's the difference, right? Like, why, why is, why do you see longevity in some other districts with school committee members differently than here? And that was one of the things that, I'm not saying it speaks to all of it, but it was a common theme of what people were, the value they were giving for their time, but then also what they were getting back for that? It just seemed to match up differently.
I also think it would be beneficial to the community if they saw a calendar view of the sub, the committee meetings, subcommittee meetings, and like you said, any workshops that people were attending, so they could see what everybody's doing throughout the year. And like you said, understand the work that we are doing and not what they think we're doing.
Right.
And I think there's lots of information out there for people to be able to see what we do. I think sometimes, people just need to want to look for it.
Yeah. And we make it easier to find.
Like that they could, what we're doing is out there. But right, maybe it's about access to finding it, or something along those lines.
And before I forget, Mike, if you could send out a copy of the annual agenda to everybody, some of us may already have it, but it'd be just good to have, just again, as part of this discussion we're going to have over the next two meetings, it'd be good to kind of see, oh, these are some of the key bullet points. There's not a lot on there, but the key bullet points are helpful to keep in mind, and that'll help us frame the, the dates.
Gordon, what do you want from us between now and the next meeting?
If, well, the next meeting is only two weeks away. To me, between now, let's target August. And my vision, somebody will have to tell, Mike, you'll have to tell me, or Liz, you'll have to tell me if this is wrong, and say, if we target a date for our meeting in August, that a lot of this work is going to get done, can we wait on the rest of this year calendar, or are we going to get arrested or something? I, I don't know, besides from our own edification, no, okay, fine. So if we target a date in August that we're going to meet, and the idea would be between the, between now, the June eighteenth meeting and the August meeting, that subcommittees would have a conversation amongst themselves, start to look at, hey, when do we think we'll need to meet? And you might need more information, if you haven't been on the subcommittee before, you might have to reach out to one of us and say, hey, when does this usually heat up, or it doesn't look like it's going to be anything this year? And say, yeah, you're right, on this subcommittee, it's not going to be. And so start to, you know, plug in or think about those dates, and to the extent that whatever subcommittees you're on have the conversation about, hey, what, what do we think our responsibility is in, under this title? And what, what's our description, you know, how do, how do we do that? Excuse me, in any subcommittee, the fundamental responsibility is to report, report to the entire committee. So two or three of you get together, or us get together, work on something, and then present to the bigger committee because none of us, even as subcommittees, have any, any power, any authority until the whole committee votes on it. So you may say, hey, our subcommittee has been working on X, Y, Z, here's what we've come up with, here's why we think this works, anyone have any questions or whatever? And otherwise, we go to vote, or table it, or whatever, whatever is appropriate. So between now, June eighteenth, maybe start to scope some things out between now and June eighteenth, so we have another discussion on June eighteenth, but certainly by August. And I haven't, I haven't looked at the calendar, like for instance, last year was August twenty-two, I don't know.
It's already on there for August twentieth.
August twenty, okay, good. Perfect, so, August twenty. So that would be, that would, that would be published, we know that meeting's going to happen, and I want on eighteenth. But the rest of the school year for our meetings, we'll finalize it on that meeting on the twentieth.
Okay, so we can leave the meeting on the twentieth, having a calendar for the end of the year?
Yes, oh yes, yes, yes.
I'll just get nervous if we don't, because I, I'm a planner.
Oh yeah, no, I, I agree. And maybe on the eighteenth, we can have more of a discussion, whatever thoughts people come up with, is to say, yeah, maybe we know in September, October, November, December, one meeting will suffice, and we think it's going to be the second Tuesday of the month, or the third Wednesday, or whatever, just to have that placeholder. And that's, okay, great, and we go from there.
And we usually only meet once in September, November, December anyway.
Yeah, yeah, so, and right now, we do Tuesdays. Tuesdays fine with me, I don't know if there's any, have any objections to it, but I would, I would target Tuesday, and I would just target, you know, the second Tuesday of the month, or the third Tuesday of the month, or whatever. And so we can all, we can zero in on the dates that way.
The only thought I had was VSPs on a Tuesday, and I would love to go to those meetings as well, but if that's not possible, then that's fine too.
Okay, all right.
Tuesdays are a good night for me.
Tuesdays work?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, well, we'll, again, as a committee, we'll vote on it.
Yep.
Are we going to have this on the agenda for next month, next month, June eighteenth? Okay.
Yes.
Because I'll go back and look at the subcommittees, I'm on a, like, policy, well, you probably don't want me to say it now.
Well, maybe we could say by June eighteenth, whomever on a subcommittee is the longest member on a subcommittee, reach out to the other.
I'm on super valid school, well, I can tell you right now, the policy subcommittee probably isn't going to meet too much, at least for the first six months, because I have the, the whole manuals being revamped.
So for right now, what if we say that the senior, the longest-term member on each subcommittee, reach out to the other people in the subcommittee to just connect? And see if there's something that, that can be done in terms of a chat? I believe it is.
In order to do that, like, we have, we can, so, we can talk as a subcommittee at a meeting? But we, so we can only, we can only communicate as a subcommittee by setting a date?
I understand, I was just about to say that.
Oh, okay.
So, and from what I've understood, right, there's, so some, some subcommittees only have two, some have three, and wasn't there something different about what needs to be posted for Mass General Law, whether it's a committee with two versus three people or more? Amy and I, for instance, we posted a meeting, I posted it through Town Hall, the two of us met to discuss the mission statement. I just followed the order and made sure to publish it. I don't know that two people on the committee talking needed to be.
If it's, well, if it's a subcommittee, if two is a subcommittee, then it has to be posted.
Okay.
If, if it's two of the whole and not a subcommittee, then you can.
Got you. So the most senior member could reach out, connect about when could they schedule something to chat formally? And then on June eighteenth, we could report back that those conversations have at least started, right? Does that make sense? Does it not make sense?
It makes sense to me.
I'm looking at Peter's face too, it was going to be like, maybe it don't make sense. I forgot my other thought.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You wait.
No, no.
Well, I was just looking at the list, it really is only like three, four, most five committees that have multiple people on them and are, you know, have, have some, you know, typical work that needs to be done throughout the year. For instance, correct me if I'm wrong, Liz, the Subcommittee for Certified Professional Contracts, those are all done, right? So we don't need that, right, this year anyway. Same with Assistant Principals? Are they up to date with these contracts?
Certified Professional Contract is coming up next year, so we'll be needing.
Next year is the teacher.
Those days usually get set by.
Is that Certified Professionals? That's not, we don't call it teachers, it's Certified Professionals.
We don't typically meet as a subcommittee for that, it's usually one person goes to the negotiations.
It depends on what you, it depends on what you, you would like to do, it's how you want to run, run it. There has been committees who said, Nick and I, I could call, I could call Gordon and say, Gordon, can you meet? Well, I can't, can anybody else? So it's like, they want to meet at nine o'clock in the morning, we can get them in at nine, we can get Nick Domenello here, we can get their attorney here, that's, sometimes it comes, it goes down to when the attorneys are available.
Well, those are usually the, the smaller, but for the teacher contract, you guys usually meet at night, right?
Yeah, and then there's some times that they'll, if it's February vacation, and we're trying to get a deal because we want to get it to FinCom, and we want to get to the, to get it done by March so that we've got an opportunity to look at the budget, there's sometimes they'll come in during February vacation. And that's, to Rebecca's exact thought process is, you're all working, you don't have a school vacation. Like our, you know, like we're on school vacation, they may want to meet to get it done with, they may not. And they may say, let's go at nine o'clock in the morning and get, and get it done. There's also been, you know, I was talking to a district that, that went all day on a Saturday a couple of weeks ago. They wanted to get it out, they just thought they could hammer it out on a Saturday.
I think this lends back to what Gordon was saying about the subcommittee should be establishing what their responsibility and goals are. So maybe it's not how we've always done it, but how we want to do it moving forward?
Yes.
And we're going to have those goals, and this is what our plan is, and based on that, then we're going to set up these meetings.
Yep, again, when you look at the list, a lot of the subcommittees have one, like a representative, legislative liaison, grievance hearing officer, et cetera. And so the Certified Professionals Contract, that's coming up, that's a big one. And some of these other ones are not, you know, voting delegate to the M A S C, M A S S Convention, that's in November, that's one person, and again, it's not a, he gives us an update before he goes and an update after he comes back kind of thing. So when you really look at it, there's a couple of committees that have some substance to it this first year. But the rest can still get together and figure out, hey, how, when we are active in this particular year, how often do we have to meet, or when is the deadline that we have to have our decisions made by? Rather than just kind of wing it. So any of that, I think we'll continue this conversation on the eighteenth. We'll start working on the agenda for the twentieth, but like I said, I really would love people's suggestions ahead of time. Hey, I think this would be helpful, or I think we should change this, or whatever, so that we can start to have a, frame it so we can have an effective, I just don't want to spend hours and hours like anyone else. We have a framework to it, we can get to it, make a decision, and move on. And that way, put them on our calendars, know what we're doing.
So what I'm hearing is we're saying by the next meeting, we're going to have concrete understanding of what our responsibilities are for each subcommittee, no?
Oh, you may have, you may have.
By August, okay.
You may have questions, you may, like, between now and the eighteenth, if you're thinking like, hey, wait a minute, how do I find out, what do I do on this committee? Maybe you haven't been on that committee before, or whatever, so you'd reach out to either Liz, or myself, or Ellen, or somebody who's been around for a while, can help.
So the next meeting is just updating what discussions we've had between now and then?
Yes.
Okay.
The only other thing I know about the calendar is I don't know, this, maybe this is a bigger topic, about how maybe certain significant school events get scheduled on school committee nights. And I certainly don't want to impose that school committee trumps all things. But we ran into a couple instances where there was a major school event that was important to a lot of people while we were also wanting to have something, the budget, right, we came into this with the budget presentation. So if there's a way to say, once our calendar is established, that if there's some way that moving forward in the schools, they'd be mindful of our calendar to not schedule something that would create that conflict. I don't know who that goes to, right, but, but that, to avoid that type of thing where people are feeling like they're choosing between something that's very important to watch their child do, or an award night, or whatever, while we are also saying, well, hey, we really want you to show up and be more invested and hear about what we're doing, so just being mindful about, about that.
So a lot of times, I didn't realize this, but I had seen it just, I don't know, a couple of months back, of the music, the music department, they have a lot of their dates preset from like, maybe we need to look at what their preset dates are because we could schedule the public hearing or whatever on a different night and not pick, not pick a preset date that the music is already set for.
Yes, if it's the other way around, the same thing would go. So if we're looking at our calendar, and the music department has already picked a spring concert on a certain day, it would make sense that we would be mindful of that that might not be the most ideal time for us to meet. In effort to avoid creating conflict or people feeling like we are not taking into account the other important things of the school.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, now, I'm going to move on to the golf program donation. I didn't see, I know it's part of the package here, so it's just a matter of us voting to accept it, generous donation where they're, I can't believe all the equipment that they're donating.
Mr. Ken, they donated last year, they are extremely generous when it comes to the golf program. They, they really want to see the girls and boys, but they really want to see girls get involved in golf. They want to see, they want to see all the kids get involved, and they want to see more kids get involved. But, thank you, thank you, thank you. We, I hope that you accept it, and I hope that we, our kids used all of their things last year, you know, from tees to ball markers, balls, gloves, I think there's a lot of gloves. These aren't all the pictures, but, thank you.
Yeah, these are great, I, any, well, we can take, we have a motion to accept this, and a second?
Second.
And any discussion?
Discussion, just questions. Do we, for the record, want to just say who the family is and what the monetary value is so that the community knows who's donating?
Yeah, unless, I'm assuming, Mike, if they didn't, if they wanted to be anonymous, they would have, would have been noted here?
Yeah, their name is not the same.
Okay.
Last year, they wanted to be anonymous, but this year, they go in and out, so it's.
Yes.
And if you read their last, if you read their last paragraph, it says, in closing, our 2024 donation was slightly under $2,000, and does not require anonymity this year. We hope this email, list of files provides additional insight required for approval. We plan to execute the order first week in June, thus if there are any foreseen issues, then timely reply as requested.
Yep, super, all right, I didn't, I didn't, just skipped right over that, I didn't notice that, so. Yes, thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Chacey, really generous, and I'm hoping, expecting that the golf team is going to be very excited about that. Okay, okay, we take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't see anyone here for public comment. And we'll so move into the action items. Action is required, I'm sorry, I haven't passed these around yet, I don't know if you've seen them, but, and I'd like to work out a, a better system where, you know, there's an effort to see these ahead of our meetings. I don't, I don't like to sign them at the meeting, but, so payroll warrant, forty-seven P S, dated five twenty-two twenty-four, and for $892,283. Have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, oh, discussion.
Sorry, thank you, thank you to John, because I've been trying to get caught up to speed, and he's been sharing his wealth of information with me. I just had a couple of questions, because I'm still learning, like I said. And so I was just wondering, and I apologize, I probably should have submitted these questions to you in writing first, so you could be prepared, so if you don't have the answers, that's fine, just curious off the top of your head. Central School Substitute Pay?
Yes.
Looks like there was about a $7,000 increase in that? And so, just so that I understand what I'm voting for, like, what is that, what accounts for that?
Well, there's three, we have three substitute accounts, Central, Mitchell, and High School. That, we have different types of subs, we have long-term subs that are paid $200 a day. We have regular, and they, they'll cover for maternity leaves and things like that. We have regular daily subs, which are paid a little less. So whenever we, we have a sub worked during that time period, those, those expenses go to this account.
So those accounts are, I expect you see fluctuation in them, are there certain times of the year where you see it more than others?
Well.
Based on due dates.
Based on due dates, yes. The maternity leaves is.
And towards the end.
Very high.
Towards the end of the, of the school year, you have staff that have personal days that they, they need to use up, so.
Need to use up?
Well, they don't need, they, so. The substitute expense lines have increased during, during. The substitute, uh, expense lines have incre, increased during, during the spread.
Um, I noticed there was no high school nurse, but I believe that that is because that's not, that person's gone, is that?
Yes, so at this point in time, we've moved one of the two Mitchell school nurses at the high school. So we will be hiring nurses for next year. We figured the last couple of weeks of school is not an ideal time for a new staff member, so.
Thank you. And then the, only question I had on the last page, the second line down, there's a personal services, um, 26330-6605100, which I believe I understand is a grant from what you've explained to me. Um, and it looks like maybe you're just paying out more this month than last month?
26 is.
It's $17,285 in last month, it was about $8,700.
Well, grants fluctuate, um, with the work that Gina does with professional develop, especially professional development, if they, um, if they have professional development, uh, classes, or if stipends get paid out, because stipends don't get paid out every, every week. They're, they're usually paid out at the end of the, end of the year. You'll see on next month's payroll, you, you're going to see variances like you've never seen before, because we're paying all the coaches, we're paying all the, uh, the, all the le, team leads for the schools, the mentor, mentor payments, uh.
Yeah, so work slip, so anyone that has served on a, a grant, uh, receives a stipend, but they don't, I don't have them fill out the work slip until the work has been completed. So, John's point, a lot of the grants end June 30th, so a lot of the work is just getting to the point where it's finalized.
On that particular account, I, I don't know if I an, answered your question, but I prob, I don't think I did, but I can certainly go back and give you the actual detail.
Thank you. That's all, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, action required to, on the minutes, the school committee meeting at 5/21. Need a mo, motion?
So moved.
Um, second?
Second.
Great, uh, discussion. I know one of the things pointed out on the subcommittee's, um, list out, uh, Mike, when it gets to the Capital Needs Planning Committee, I think there's only one person, and, and, Peter, is that going to be you? I know it has both you and Dan, but only one person needs to be, so.
Unless they were going to tag team.
Weren't we, I thought we were going to, if you couldn't go, I'd fill in.
Yeah, I think that's.
So they're going to tag team, there'll be two, there'll be one alternate or something.
Right, that's the only thing that showed up for me, but.
And then I'm going to find out tomorrow, I'm going to call tomorrow morning to Town Hall to see if they need to have a letter or be sworn in or something.
Yeah, you have to.
I think for apple.
I think you have to swear in. Yeah, leave it, yep, okay. Um, okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, and, excuse me. Action, uh, required after review of accounts payable, uh, 48 S V, dated 5/29.
So moved.
Removed, and.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Okay, see you in nine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. And, excuse me, and I think we already voted on the accepting of the donation from Philip Endeavour-Chasse, the golf supplies. And any other discussion before we move to close?
Most of you are good.
Yep.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much.